Is seven oh one, so I will call the meeting to order. I'm Charlie Benzvene, president of the Board of Trustees for the East Cleveland Community Library. Got our December meeting tonight. So we'll move the agenda. Does anyone see any things we should change on there? If not, we'll go to the public comment. We have two public comments. Start with the first one, so we got a public comment about the recent period party. So this one is from Anne Cronin. She said, "I've read the library's programming policy and I understand that Planned Parenthood's presentation meets the qualifications and guidelines people offer." The least one could say about the organization is that they are a controversial business that relies heavily on encouraging as normal sexual exploration an activity among hard youth. The eventual role of feeding their mean moneymaker abortion. I would like to suggest that the library's programming policy be amended to include a clause allowing the library subjectively screening out organizations who does this plan plans to include the care of their Indian being. Exertations such as the law administration, community assistance enough from good will of community by offering needed information. This encourages parents to trust Planned Parenthood as a business that has been, that has the well-being of their children at heart. Thus laying the groundwork for reaching out to them in the future when the children's sexual needs are aroused. At that point, however, Planned Parenthood no longer encourages parental involvement, but in fact shuns it as children advance with their normal sexual exploration. They will undoubtedly need some of their other services Planned Parenthood offers, namely STD treatment, contraceptions, contraceptives, perhaps gender transitioning formulas, and ultimately abortion. And negatively, it means in our society, ultimately, what the breakdown of the family, our basic social structure. She said, "I'd like to share this message with the board as public comment during this meeting. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Anne Grove." And the second one we've got is from Heidi Listkorn. She said, "Dear Jill, we've been regular library users at the East Cleveland Library for over twenty-five years. The library has been, been and continues to be an essential resource in our lives. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to use it despite living in an SO mailing address. We were shocked to read the news about the potential for the town to invoke eminent domain in order to take possession of the green space next to the library for a police station. We couldn't understand how this could actually happen without the community. We always assumed that the library would expand as funds allowed into more community-oriented spaces such as the teen center, educational garden with a B yard and cistern, and a space for outdoor summer movies, art make-offs, almost any other option. Unfortunately, we were unable to attend the town meetings since input on the measure, I see the input on the measure, and have been wondering how it all shook out. I used to send a post-it letter from even Charlie Benzvene on the library's website. We were very grateful to read that a police station is no longer an option on that section of green space. It was hopeful that the community would make their voices heard on the matter regarding regards to the Listkorn family." All right, so the public comment wrapped. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. So we can't get into the emotions for November eighteenth. Meeting, the members in the packets, as I didn't want to be. Does anyone have any comments for?
I think there was this. I'll say both of them. That would seem like it. Maybe I'll tell anything else. Okay, so the one for Frank.
Yeah, the ZO, you know, should be C O P P A, not C U P P A. So I'll make that adjustment in the approved minutes.
Anything else? What is this meeting? And see none. Motion to approve the minutes of the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five library board meeting. I'll make a motion. Second. Let's say this, Kayla. Any comments or discussion? See none. Motion to approve the, all in favor? Four to zero, so the motion passes. And we'll move on for the final series of treasurer reports.
Year is ninety-two point eight percent over and the library is in the standings. It seemed like in honey, that whole month, there was nothing ever beyond Mary or it was not even any larger extent through everything was pretty effective. They didn't have any questions about, I guess, the abundance. Well, there are two motions. The first, I'm sorry, the first is to accept the off warrant in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars forty-five cents for the period of November, November fifteenth through December fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Kayla, and I'll second. All in favor? Or any discussion, comments? See none, all in favor? Four to zero. Yes, mistake.
Next is motion to offer as the president to sign the warrant for the period of November fifteen, twenty twenty-five through December fifth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents.
Kayla, and second. None in favor? Any motion passes with zero?
Lastly, a motion to approve the December fifth, twenty twenty-five financials with ninety-two point eight percent bigger completed as presented.
End of the sign. Kayla, the second. Any discussion, comment? None, all in favor? Four to zero, so it passes. Thank you. They're, they're hard working.
You do want to add that? Thank you.
All right, so between the main reports. And we've got Mary would present more services, it looks like, but with her years, she'll be here in a second, so switch over temporarily and go to Amanda Forhat.
Well, that's I'm going to write that down. First, thanks to Kayla, appreciate the minutes. Much appreciated for the, for the founding phase. Okay, great to jump. I don't know where I was at there. We had, we had a few things, just little things, little tie-up things with the end of the year. We talked about SCODE, about the you guys probably already contacted them to the final number during, so we haven't reached out. Oh, we haven't turned back. Okay, I haven't been back. We did reach out, but Council, Councilman and Nassau Library requested and received flat funding grants that are allegedly received by great. That's what everybody, I mean, it would make sense that they received what they asked for and then based on that we would get what they told us they were getting us based on the budget, so I don't anticipate any changes in that. We'll get haven't had a an email response yet, but we did request to start meeting again for next year's ending the contract. Usually we get the contract in January. And then the air handler unit is still being installed. It is a massive undertaking, as it turns out. There's lots and lots of other parts, right?
Yeah, we're waiting for a tiny part to be told.
Okay, it's always the small
It's the project that never ends, that project.
And there's also an issue with the new windows, so there's a lot of compensation on that. Did we get anywhere with finding out the cause or?
We're, it hasn't happened again. We're still, so they're gonna so my non my educated, non-builder guess, or not engineering guess, is that it's really a water issue, not a condensation issue. Because we haven't had condensation again. It was a really rainy day. So it seems like there was seepage. The building, the window design is designed to have water seeped through the frame and go out, so there's, I guess there's something wrong with that.
There's something stuck or something like
I don't know. I mean, that's, they are investigating that though. They have, they're coming out with meters to measure humidity. Once they decide that the humidity is not a problem.
Which probably is each thing.
I don't think the humidity is getting around that there's not, yeah. Then they, I mean, we're not going to know until one of our reading that that will happen again. But we, it's all under warranty. We haven't paid the, you know, the final bill is not even there. We haven't paid that yet, so it's not a done project. We're still, it's still an open item.
We also looked at really quickly the ADA facilities checklist as a reminder to ourselves of, as we plan for the next phase of the construction project, we want to keep in mind the ADA accommodations that we, we already have and can, and what we can add to make it even more accessible as we go through the next project. Also talked about the space audit, which is a big part of the strategic planning. And that's going to be added to next year's construction list as we develop ideas and get more or plans really for how to not reinvent the space, but make it as informative to our plan as, as we can. Then we jumped to the nominating committee and we discussed a lot about the building treasurer position because as you know, there's some screens left and there's four spots. So we were going to email the incoming trustees and see if anyone was interested. How did that go?
We got some interest.
Oh, that's good. Otherwise, as you can see, the slate is Travis president, I share myself as vice president, Kayla as secretary. So I think we have to do, we have to, but I know we have to do a motion for it, but I don't know if we put it in the package.
Yes.
Okay, maybe you put it, so but are we able to discuss now what we're going to do with the treasurer resolution or?
Yeah, and so I reached out. Doug said he was interested and so has experience. She said, she's, she is some exposure or some work, professional responsibilities with kind of accounting, but she was interested in kind of learning more about it. So I think between two of them, we can figure out. Someone can have a finalized name or a finalized person to go with, but I think from the new, new oncoming trustees, we should be able to fix it by soon.
Well, that's exciting. But is that, is that going to change how we do the motion tonight or are we just going to do?
It's over here.
Well, if there's any, if there are any checks that need to be.
Can the vice president do that, though? We don't, are you already on? I'm not current, I'm not this year. I've signed the book. But I'm not an officer this year, so I'm not going to flip away.
Well, we're flying through this checklist, do you just discuss it? I mean
Maybe see.
We can have a good timeline, time, trustees.
I mean, it may not matter, actually.
Yeah.
Because I'm a signer and you're a signer.
Yeah, I think as long as that if you're the vice president is a signer.
Yeah. So we think that would give us three signers and that we could appoint at the January.
Go over the role, explain it and then see.
See what we're taking.
I think that's a good way.
Or you can just talk to them.
Yeah.
Think, if who has the most time?
Yeah.
Honestly, that might be the better way to pick.
Okay, so I think you want to do the motion now about the nominating.
Yeah, because we always, of course, we do, we always do a slate in January as president, treasurer, point of treasurer.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so we'll do that, so then, yeah. So we already do a motion to approve the slate of officers for calendar year twenty twenty-six as presented.
For the minutes, can you just verify this week?
Oh, yeah, so we got Charlie Benzvene as president, Amanda Miller as vice president, Kayla as secretary, and we're going to
Contract.
Ah, contract, yes. To be determined, so we'll have that for the January. Motion to approve the slate of officers for calendar year twenty twenty-six as presented. Motion from Kayla, I'll second it. Any discussion, comments? All in favor? All right, so we're two, five, to zero, motion passes. Thanks to everyone.
Let's see, I think that, no, no, so we discussed the land sale and lease, lease policy, like this is the very beginning formulation of this, so this is like, like what do we want, what are we, what are we requiring, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? And one of the things that we all agreed on is that any sale of library or land requires vote that Jill is going to reach out to attorney and upper Hudson for guidance. And that we're going to send the policy to the services committee to write and the administrative committee will look at it after it's filed last. And there was a big discussion on space planning. Both committees should be involved or we should do a subcommittee. I think we, I think we were going to go with like just having both committees involved. I don't think we're going to go with subcommittee. And then possibly having an architect hired to oversee, to do a planning study. The subcommittee would, these were more likely to fall under the services committee. And then we also discussed the upper Hudson meeting as our position. Did, I know we said that Kami is welcome to continue in that role. Did she say she's willing to continue in that role? No? Yeah, she was going to continue. That's what I was, I'm sorry. But I don't know if that's what we're doing, so. Um, next meeting, we're going to have all the same things on the agenda. Very exciting.
We'll circle back to services.
You put this right in, Mary.
We get, before we get to, how about?
I mean, I don't, everybody's all, we talked about it, I don't know. We also, I didn't really catch what admin changed. My gosh, it's so, I was, I was
Basically, like, we, we figured that it was, it made sense for the services committee to write the policy and then add an interview for the financial once it's finalized.
Oh, the part number four. When he did.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's a TV, you know. Okay, but Jordan did accept that.
Yes, well, just
Oh, for the one year. Vote. I was very interested in that Majon's vote. I was curious to hear more about that.
What do you want to hear?
Like, so, so basically, it, so I'm not really understanding, like I think there was a whole thing about their, like, her being part of the friends, like, and then being a contract, like, I don't, I don't know them following the full problem, not problem, but the issue.
If, if there isn't, we have determined, there isn't one way.
Yeah.
I also, and you won't help me, the services committee, we felt that it was important as, and Jill as well to bring it up. Because it could be a perception. It's an optics thing. So for the public, you know, and it really, it is not an issue, but it's just, everybody knows her as the president of the brand, I mean. So we can, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Hundred percent.
Just want to be very cool.
Yeah.
But she's not doing it in that bowl, so.
So it's a lot of
But that's what we have. But, you know, it makes sense for the library to take the program for, because it really was a growth thing. Starting out, it didn't start out that way, but it gradually has developed.
I don't want to be honest, a great model for a community driven program.
Yeah, somebody was interested, supported something and they found something so successful that it needed to kind of continue and we needed to give it a structure and support library. So I think it's a great, a great to do and we're, I mean, the cost is in line in many ways, less than what we typically have. So that piece is useful.
Yeah. So does that claim it in the end?
It does. I just, it was just a lot of, not sure what this is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, I just, it was just, same. And I, and we just felt that we wanted to bring it up here too, so that anybody on the board with your services would have served on about that.
I disagree with you, I'll throw it in your face.
That's not fair.
I was teasing.
Yeah, so it sounds like really a win-win kind of things. Any other questions on? And, and so we're done with the services committee, so it's not that, which is
Yeah.
But we're going to the regular process. The fees table, I think he thinks in our projects, he, 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 we, nothing has changed in terms of the fees. But the board needs to approve those fees for next year's. Yeah, the motion, committee put forth a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six table of fees as presented.
As I can I have a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the, one of the things, one of the comments I saw on Facebook, and there's a couple of people who said this. They were concerned about the cost of charging for prints. Now, we took away the fax fees because it wasn't very much income. Like, how much income are we earning from the print and copying? So if that is something that we add to our equity, saying we're naked, like, less incumbent on people, because again, it's also cash. It doesn't take card. Like, it's hard to have, like, the right change.
You do take cards.
Oh, for, oh, I did not know that. That's good to know, too.
Yeah.
Um, but also, like, like, how much income are we getting from that? Is it worth keeping that going when we could operate as a free service theoretically? As part of, you know, equal opportunity and making it more accessible?
So, I believe number, but also I think it's, it is something that we talked a little bit about. Implementing that, maybe that's something that we consider during group.
And I wouldn't say
So that we do an actual study and then impact on, on what it would really mean, but for this year, are you teaching? It is nine thousand eighty dollars and sixty-one cents to date.
Seems like seven?
Nine thousand. It's approximately nine thousand dollars to date.
Yes, but it's also small, too. You go, like, you go out the way.
Yeah, I just, I think about the cost of a, of a, you know, the machine.
Right, that's the other thing, too, how much it's
Well, that's the study that needs to be, that's just the revenue. Yes.
Yeah, like, you know, somebody printing their entire, like, business out of there, so that's, that's another. And I'm not saying we do it, I just want to see, like, what how much it costs us to run that printer, plus, like you said, this is all things that you brought up in the committee.
Right.
I just wanted to bring it up here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should do a real study on that. If we started doing that internally already, but I think we could do a much more comprehensive study. I would like to see how many times people are printing large documents versus small, you know, there's a lot of different parameters in there because if it's free, what happens? Do people complain all the time where people come? Can we support that? What, like, what, you know, what, what your risk would be and how much is that and could be managed, the potential growth of a service? And at least so we would know what that cost is. Is that a cost that we're willing to cover, budget or not? Yeah, I think there's a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
Because you always have to consider, like, saying to free will make a difference perhaps in usage.
Right.
And I don't know how you predict that and Right, and is there a threshold, you know, like the first ten copies or five copies or are there, is there a way to kind of, we don't want to get into a scenario. The only thing I would be, not be in favor of is making judgment calls on what someone's printing. I would say it's like across the board, you get this many per visit or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
Per week, per month, I don't know. I'm sure there's a way that we could figure something out. But I'd like to do a study on that and then also incorporated would be the cost of toner and paper and, you know, just the staffing component of all of that too, to make sure that we're building all of it to have a full picture of the true cost.
Finds free concept when you pull that out to have other libraries that has a you know, not like an in-depth, but just like a, you know, somewhat quick sample. Like, or if that's just a trend you see in, like, in the library director kind of trade association world of like, this is the, a new minimum equity to us, right? Like, if there's like an article or two on it type of deal, like, that would be a couple too, to see just contextually where other folks are thinking in other libraries.
So we can, I think what we can do is add it, if you guys are okay, I think we could add it to the services committee topic to kind of address and then I, you know, then it's on the radar and I, and I put together a proposal and then the services committee from a services standpoint would make their recommendation, yea or nay, before the budget. I, the budget committee could decide.
Do you think it's, is it services or would, yeah?
I feel like it would, yes.
Is it something?
Well, if we're talking about the financial component, like the, yeah, like the cost, like the, the hours, things.
I would, I would throw it in admin.
I mean, I mean, I think then services, that's fine.
I think services could look at it from
From like an equity standpoint, you think it's
But I think the more, the bulk of it is going to be more admin-based because like, there's like money. Like, we're looking at financial use here. I would, I would say it's admin.
I think everybody needs to agree that it's something worth exploring before we go into all all of that too. I mean, if, if there's consensus here and we just put it straight to admin, yeah, we want to explore it. It's an equity issue.
I mean, I know, I want to explore it, but
Like a consensus. Then that's good, right to admin.
And you think it does fit my strategic, like, we are, even if we don't adopt it, at least we are looking at what we can do equitably to improve access, like, even if we don't end at the top.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to derail the whole piece, but
So I think we mentioned a little, to approve what we have. So the committee makes, makes the motion, so
Same, I said, same, you, any other discussion?
Yeah, and
Nothing has changed. Literally, it's in flesh. Okay, that's all. That's all we got.
The other question comes here. Five to zero, the motion, motion to thank Mary. That's it for
No, we probably think it was, because like, well, the only other thing I mean, I don't know that it could really, it really, I don't think it's special. First, the because it sounds like everybody's on board with the policy versus a bylaws change with rent, use, or sale. And then the two policies that we look at, the, the serving role of operations and group visits. Jill is going to take those and do a combine of that, you'll catch some other policies. And maybe you'll get us an equitable service policy. So there really isn't anything for the board to do with that, which is the point. Right, Jill? So the policy will come back to services.
Yeah, so.
So that wraps up the committee reports. Nothing unfinished business, so we'll get to Jill for the word.
Thank you. I guess first, are there any questions from my friend? Really mean to go into more detail about?
It's pretty short months of last meeting, so
Yeah, a very short report. I'm happy to see that, I think that the superintendent talked about that, right? Homes and library, and I think that'll be a really cool thing.
Yes.
I know when the kids did their visit, they heard about the night at the library event and they wanted something like that for them. So, like, I know So, like, I know it's not the same thing, but it's like kind of on the same wavelength to have the kids, like, all kids, all each of you to. Be welcome to library. I think that's gonna be really good thing if you do it.
That's great.
And that, I assumed, I, I assumed that that was going to not just be kids oriented, but am I wrong about that?
No, yeah, so right. And like, and we haven't agreed to that yet. We just started discussing that. There, there were other things that we talked about, too. That we've been talking about, um. Moving, having the kids visit the library every transitional year.
At every library.
So as they're heading into, as they're heading into middle school, kindergarten, heading into middle school, heading into high school, and they're graduating. So that they could get an introduction to what's available at all of those different ages. And then we also talked about. Potentially, um, doing, uh, training. There's an organization for people who live in the district or just training for teachers. And we also talked about the educator part there, really.
It was a good meeting. I mean, it was an introductory meeting, you know, it's sort of a new relationship, rebuilding.
Mm-hmm. From a planning relationship and that. So be positive and just continue.
Or is, um, Mr. Simon staying on the committee or the community action group or?
No.
Right, um, are we inviting the new superintendent?
You've been invited, yeah, accepted, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I also think that that dovetails with what the committee was talking about at some of the other hearings where. You have, you know, welcome to the library event, it's, um. People with the, you know, what, what.
What's happening, what's going on?
What's happening?
Yeah.
Not here to see you.
Exactly.
So I like her, too.
Overall, uh, November is a very strong month. Library was open two hundred and forty-nine hours. We've recorded twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three total visits, and that's through the building, website, drive-through. That is a sixteen percent increase over last number. And versus twelve percent ahead year-to-date. In-person visits grew seven percent last year. And also, I just, I brought the, the year-to-date. Figures January, if you remember, because we're almost at a full year. So in January, you'll get the wrap-up yearly. But, um. We, we have some really interesting things here, and I've been reporting on it, but a lot of times you're reporting month compared to the previous year's month. So it's hard to get the big picture. Big picture, what we're looking at is building visits are up fourteen point four percent year-to-date. Drive-through visits down six point nine percent, no surprise there. Website up eleven percent. Physical materials down two point nine percent. Digital materials up five point three percent. Databases up eight point eight percent. Wifi uses down slightly, computer use is down slightly. Public computer use is down slightly, but I think there was an error in one month last year because every single month, when you go in and look at it, every single month is higher except that one month. And that number is so skewed that I think there, there was an error in that one that we didn't catch. Program attendance is up. So building visits up fourteen percent. Program attendance up twenty-eight point five percent. Meeting room use by outside groups up twenty-five percent. Um, new library card registrations up eighteen percent. Monthly active library card holders. So this is sort of the retention, not just signing people up, but are people actually using us every month? That's gone up one point seven percent. So. The pr- the physical item use is going down, but that's not surprising. When you, some things are curious. Some of, some of the collections are curious, but it's not surprising that our AV use is going down. Just DVDs are. That's such a huge collection for us. They're still very valuable. But not nearly as used to be, so that number is gonna continue to go down. But we are seeing some print. Books going down, too. But the, the online is going up, so. But it's not impacting. But we're also seeing, interesting, we're trying to figure out. Historically, we always thought more programs, more people reading. And we're not seeing, I mean, we're seeing fourteen percent more people through the building. And with program attendance up twenty-eight percent, that is not. Correlated with materials use. So that's just an interesting thing, you know, so it's, it's kind of, we've, we've talked about. Are there ways that we can collect, connect our collection with the programs to encourage people to take out items? Um, or are people reading less? And why? So.
With physical materials, like when people come in and read the newspaper or magazine, it's, it's them. That's not.
That's not happening anywhere. So it's just people.
The daily bit, yeah.
Yeah, it's only capturing what people are borrowing and taking out of the building. So that's another thing, isn't it? People could be, yeah, there's so many different things, but we're, we're really digging into that data. But really, programming seems to be a major strength. People are loving the program. Programming in November, we provided fifty-four group programs, ninety-five one-on-one services, and we had generally two thousand people here. The. Last weekend, we had the, the period party, which was, we had a full comment about that. We had over seventy people. Wow, it was an incredible turnout there. Um. I stayed in there the whole time, and it was, um, very scientific information was provided about. Right? Bodies, what happens during menstruation. And it was, I mean, I learned new things. I, a lot of the moms stayed in there with their. Uh, it's, and it was. And it was an hour and a half where they were listening to a, a teaching session. They stopped many times along the way, um, with, okay, we're gonna talk about something that's uncomfortable. Here's your time. If you wanna take a break, put your head down, you know, or you wanna continue, like, here's an option. This is what we're gonna talk about. This is what, you know, you're gonna see a picture of this. Um, so it was, there were, and there were a lot of, like, check-ins along the way to make sure that kids were comfortable. But really, it was sort of a raving, what body parts on, or, you know, and they're not doing that in school now. And it's a, just a, it's science and it's important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So it was, I think we will probably definitely do it again. If people were so appreciative, and afterwards, they came over here, made, you know, they got to take home supplies. And. And they got to test out, like, not test, but ta- like, hold and look at different products and. Talk about why some products are, you have to be concerned about these products, these products are healthy for your body. Like, it was really, uh, very educational.
And now I don't know.
Yes, stuff I never learned.
Adult version.
Maybe we should have an adult version because it really was something that most people are not.
Wait, where's our period menopause, menopause?
Yeah.
Party.
Sure. All snacks. Stand on all snacks.
Just say it. No, I really think that's amazing, and I'm really happy that they helped, they helped out here, yeah.
It was a. Fantastic program, educational program, and it was really nice to see such engagement. And one of the pieces that I wanted to bring to you was. There were a lot of new people there that had got, there was a group of, like, seven or eight kids that came all together with their moms. And it was like they planned to come, and they just both ran a group. They were, you know, asking where they were going, like, had never been there before. And so. It's always, to me, important that we're bringing in new people, and, you know, then people could walk around and see what's at the library. Oh, do you do this every year? This is so fantastic.
Yes, yes, the thing was, I think it opened up.
Yeah, so I think it's an opportunity right now for to, for us to just talk about what we're doing. So that people. I mean, it's, there's so many great things going on, and so that everybody can know about it, so they can use it. We issued a hundred and fifty-six new library cards this month. That's forty-four percent over last year. At the same time, um. Active card holders increased just about six percent this month over the previous November. Um. Yeah. Operationally, there's really no personnel changes right now. There's no personnel move random for you this month. We have one position open, the library, part-time library assistant position. Uh, we still have someone in that position until the year. So, uh, we hope to pull that shortly. We replace desktop computers, you know, we're just kind of working at, any, but we'll be really trying to work on. Getting these capital projects wrapped up, um, but we'll be moving right into the next phase of the roof.
Well, wouldn't the window issue, did they, did that happen?
No, so we talked about that a few minutes ago, but they have not figured it out yet. I don't really think that it's condensation. I think that it's water intrusion because it only happened during that one heavy rainstorm. So we're still. Investing.
Exploration.
Max exploration, trying to figure it out, but it will, I mean, it has to be solved, so.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, so we won't let it go.
Yeah.
We have new behavioral incidents this month. Nothing really, I mean, it's all kind of worked its way. Oh, there's. The. Couple of teams that we're working with, and, you know, they. There's. More, you know, we're following our plan. We're following our, our code of conduct, and sounds was, yeah, but consequences, yep. So they've been asked a few times. But.
And they do.
And they do. It's. Right on the stage and over to the next day, you know, so. Most of the teens who visit the library are really wonderful and want to be here. And then some just really need a space, but it's really not the space they want to be in. I mean, yeah, so.
Are there any programs that you want to, you want to talk me, I have a few things in there, something you wanted me to talk about?
Well, before. But the website update, I think we had an update on that.
You have not had an update on it, but that is because we are. We're still in progress with our current, current vendor. We're, I would say, halfway done. Not entirely, please. There's been a lot of back and forth. Um, so we're kind of at the point where we're trying to decide whether we. Or separately, we've had frank conversations. And bring it in-house, which will be a lot more work time. I really don't wanna do that. Um, we've only just sort of paid for your work at this time that you've done up to here. The, the homepage design is great. But we're finding that the backend is not as user-friendly as our currents. We're trying to, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of. We're, we, we don't wanna lose functionality into something that's more proprietary. That's, you know, we don't want it to be so custom-built that we can't adjust it. Um, and have the flexibility because the website is changing all the time. So that's kind of the piece that we're trying to work through right now, and that there, the vendor is working with us, um, but. Um, different. We're not necessarily on the same page, so we're trying to do our best to work through it.
Do you, did, when you started redesigning it, was there input from, um, outside, you know, patrons that were using it? Or is it just really internal?
Um, well, we get input all the time based on how people, like, we've been taking in the information from other people on how they're using the website, what they're finding hard to use. Those pieces we fixed. So we fixed, even if it were to move in-house, we fixed the navigation and, like, the organization of it all. That's all done. Um, so. We're just at the point where it's taking so long. Is it time for us to just quickly turn it over and then we see if we can get it out?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I see the updates. We still have a committee working, an interim committee working. You know, it's, we've made some progress. It's just not very objective at this point.
It seems to me like it's an ongoing, I mean, webs- websites probably have to change all the time.
Oh, they definitely do. What they're doing is, right now, they're in the middle of migrating every single page over. So the design is pretty much done. Um, it's. I think there were hopes. That are not achievable at the price point that we adopted. So we're, we're kind of trying to work within that, but at the same time, we do not wanna lose momentum. That's a really important piece. So they can fix the functionality piece. I mean, the graphic design piece. We can make it better internally.
Yeah.
That's not the end of the world. We really felt like that was a huge piece in the future. We can spend money on. Functionality for the public is a primary and for staff, too. So that's what we're focusing on when we have to make the decisions of, yes, we'll work with you or no, we won't, and yes, we wanna accept this change, no, we won't. So it's just put tiny things, like it'll look great on one computer, but then the other computers, it won't. And why is this not? Why do you have to customize it for each page? Why is it not built into the theme? And there's just a lot of different things that we're trying to work through. So yes, it is a bit of a project. This, it's a massive project, but. It's. Still, we're still making progress, but it's not ready to go.
I was just curious.
Do you have as long as to, how long to?
Not right now. Not right now, but.
We're. You're making decisions.
We're making a decision, and then we'll be able to tell you.
Was this budgeted in this year's budget or what? Is it gonna carry over to next year's technology line or?
Well, it was budgeted in this year's budget, and we did pay partial in this year's budget. Um. It's not a massive amount. It's left, so. I think the over, I want to, don't hold me to it, but I think it was like eleven, nine thousand dollars, something like that.
What?
Right? Does that sound about right?
Sound in rate?
Yeah, I still think we paid about fifty percent of it, so we're, we're.
So it's not gonna make or break the time?
It's not gonna make or break it. No. I guess finally, just, I just would like to thank you guys. Been a, um. Probably a more challenging last six months than I ever had.
Here, she's saying that, you know, for being here from COVID.
I mean, COVID, I guess you, you, you just lived through it, right? It was like unknowing, you know, this. I just, I would say thank you. I think you guys are an incredible group of humans who really care deeply about the library and the community. And, um, appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the community. And, um. Just your support from your. Staff. And special. To. You know, the trustees? Nicole. Uh, very hard to imagine you guys not being here.
Mary's been here four time months here. I don't know what to do.
Barry has been here since I started. Like, we, Mary was on a friend's leadership, and so we just, like, kind of grew together through this. Um, you've all been right up here.
I was the director.
What, Shaggy? Yeah, you came on. So you've been here. On a very almost daily basis for.
I guess she deserves it.
A lot of years. Including an extra year after a write-in campaign. Not initiated by you.
I'm not written in, but I was on the board.
And.
Thank you. One of the only, I was teasing.
But I know I'm just later, but just thank you. Appreciate all of you. Of course, I appreciate you. I try to tell her that every day, and I know you guys appreciate Jenna, too.
We very much appreciate.
Such, isn't it been amazing?
It, it has been, yeah.
It made a huge difference.
Yeah, really.
Yes. Yes.
You, you're the real advocate.
Special honor. Thanks for your nice life, but they're related, so. If you don't have a table with me, I have. Thank you.
So, that's it.
Thanks so much. I'll, I go back when you said, thank you for a great year. We're, you're the president, Jen, thank you, thanks to all the staff, it's really a great place to be a part of. Um, shift over to liaison reports and I didn't get anything from liaison script. No?
We did, we did receive our check from Rensselaer County.
Oh, I saw it all in your, yeah, when I was looking at, hanging in there, basically.
Good. Special thanks to Jenna.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Liaison reports, new business. Got a board. Yeah.
Well, um.
Well. Did you get that either?
Thank you.
Yeah.
The relations of, uh, your.
And I don't have yours in front of me, what are the years?
Twenty. Twenty or.
My, I'm just two years.
That's it?
Yeah.
Gosh, it feels like a lot longer.
Well, also community advisory council.
Yeah, oh, and strategic.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Mary, two thousand nineteen. Sometime through now. So you did a one-year film, then a five-year term and then a one-year plan.
Yeah.
But you didn't. They, you get real, they next year. You better move.
I will miss the parade.
No, I'm so.
That's, that's good. Thank you all for all your service, um, we really appreciate you being on, on, on the team here and helping us out and contributing all the, the good work we've done. Thank you for, you know, everything you contributed, what I've learned from you, um. You're a must-have to hear on the, on the board.
And you can still send in credit.
Yeah, please.
She's trying to. Send anything that. Check those minutes, be like.
I'm watching this something.
Something feel bad, I said, should do that.
Like, I don't say, like, I'm trying to catch it, so she does it and then I, I mess up.
That's a secret. Makes everybody.
But I, I, I mean, this, I've seen such energy, like, just grow on the board, which has been really fun. For me, um, and I also think, and just seen a lot of growth. I can't believe everything that's been accomplished with the strategic plan, community advisory council, I mean, there's so many new things that happened. Just while I was on the board and, and I'm sure there's plenty that's at that. What? Um. It went, went very, it's good. And I'm gonna, I will miss everyone. But I'll probably find other things I could do. And I'm still gonna stay involved, I mean, I'm involved with the friends and hopefully, like, maybe I'd want, yeah, new advisory council still. It.
I really think.
Yes. And I think it's exciting too, the new people that are gonna be coming in, removes to bring a bunch of trustees to me.
Who else? Um. We've got for the last time in twenty twenty-five, we've got evidence for the motion to adjourn the December ninth, twenty twenty-five library board gig.
About.
They're letting off.
There is.
Your second. All the new discussion comments, all in favor? To zero, perfect, thanks everyone, thanks for your.
Thank you, Nicole, you can give us your parting gift of sticking around to sign this.
The truth, the truth.